All right. Good evening, everyone. It is 6:45 PM and I'm calling the Select Board Order. We will do the Pledge of Allegiance at 7:00. In accordance with the requirements of the Open Meeting Law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook Page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube Channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the Open Meeting Law. I move to enter into Executive Session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30, Section 21A2 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And this is for the Director of Municipal Finance/Town Accountant.
Sir.
All right. This will be a roll call vote. Glenn?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. We are now in Executive Session. All right, we are back in open session.
All right.
All right. We're going to begin tonight with announcements and...
Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, my apologies. I forgot about the pledge. All right. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I already read the Open Meeting Law notice, and on to announcements. And before we begin with announcements, I would like to acknowledge the recent and sudden passing of Town Resident and Bolton Police Chief Luke Hamburger. For those who knew Chief Hamburger, they have remarked upon his dedication to community policing, his warm personality and integrity. Our deepest sympathy go to his family, his friends, and the entirety of the Bolton Police Department and community. At this time, I would ask everyone to please bow their head and join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. Moving on to announcements. Beginning Wednesday, October 15th, the cost of pay-as-you-throw trash bags will increase by about 5.5 percent. This change is necessary because in recent years, the cost of trash disposal has been higher than the revenue generated by the pay-as-you-throw bag sales. Adjusting the bag prices will help close that gap. The new prices per roll are as follows. Extra-large 40-gallon bags went from $25.07 to $26.50. Large 33-gallon bags went from $16.39 to $17.25. And small 13-gallon bags went from $16.10 to $17. Seniors aged 65 and older can apply for the Sand for Seniors program. To apply, call the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center at 978-582-4166 and ask for Pauline Roy, the Outreach Coordinator. Do not contact the DPW or Fire Department. Applications are handled through the Adult Activity Center. If approved, a member of the Fire Department will deliver one five-gallon bucket of sand to your home, and while there, will check your smoke and carbon monoxide detectors for you as well. Thank you to the Fire Department and the DPW for their support of our senior citizens in continuing this program. Fall 2025 Yard Waste Days will be October 18th, the 25th, November 1st, 8th, 15th, 22nd, and December 6th. The landfill will be closed the week of Thanksgiving, so every Saturday from October 18th to December 6th, except Thanksgiving week, open from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Acceptable materials include glass, grass clippings, bark mulch, wood chips, leaves, and brush with a diameter not to exceed three inches, shrubbery implantings. Any bag, box, or container must be removed and taken by the resident. The Teen Centers' Ninth Annual Shrieks and Creeks, Haunted House, and Hay Ride will be on October 18th from 6:30 to 9:30 PM. So if you're brave enough to step into the haunted house and take a ride on their spooky hayride, you should attend. And if not, you can still take a stroll along the Monster Midway and enjoy cotton candy, hot chocolate, a bouncy house, games, food trucks, and more. If you'd like to help out with the event, reach out to Andy by email, andy@theclubltc.org. Library Halloween Costume Parade will be on Monday, October 26th, 27th, from 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And it's hosted by the library, so it'll start at the Storycraft Room at the library, and the parade will make its way to other town buildings for trick-or-treating. And the library will be holding a closing birthday party for their 20-year building anniversary celebrations on Friday, October 24th, from 5:00 to 6:30 PM, in the Wallace Community Room at the library. There will be cake, activities for all ages, and maybe even a visit by a clown or two. At the end of the party, they'll announce the winners of the scavenger hunt raffles, and then there will be a jazz ukulele concert as well. All right. Those are all of the announcements. And moving on to appointments, we have several tonight. So we're going to begin tonight with the ratification of the appointments of Grace Kerr and Elijah Weiss as police officers.
Good evening, Select Board, Town Manager.
I just wonder if we want to do both? Do we want Elijah to come up as well, or...
He's going to do one at a time.
Yeah, or, okay. Either way.
I'll be quick. With the opening of two police officer positions with the Lunenburg Police Department, I am pleased to recommend Grace Kerr for the position of full-time police officer. Grace is a resident of Fitchburg, Mass., and has been a Fitchburg State University police officer since September of 2023. She graduated Fitchburg State University Police Program in May of 2023 and graduated with a master's degree in criminal justice in 2025. Grace was also the captain of the Fitchburg State University Field Hockey Team while she was enrolled in the police program. It is found through her background investigation that Grace is a well thought of and an excellent employee of Fitchburg State Police Department. Grace was described as a great person, team player, dependable, and hardworking. Grace is also a certified RAD instructor and certified by the Massachusetts Post Commission. Grace has the necessary skills and characteristics to be a very successful within our organization. She has met all the requirements for this position, and we look forward to Grace joining the Lunenburg Police Department. I am requesting that Grace Kerr be appointed to the position of police officer effective October 7th, 2025. Thank you for my consideration.
All right. Do you want to introduce both candidates and then...
Sure. I'm also pleased to recommend Elijah West for the position of full-time police officer. Elijah is a resident of Lemester, Mass., and has been a Menden police officer since October of 2023. Elijah graduated from Curry College with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice in 2016. While at Curry College, Elijah was the captain of their college rugby team. They had two captains. Elijah graduated from the MPTC Plymouth Police Academy in September of 2022, and before that, he was a police officer with Fitchburg State University from 2021 through 2023 before joining the Menden Police Department. It was found through his background investigation, Elijah is described as a great person and a real good police officer. He was described as a proactive officer and is always looking to help the department. Elijah is a certified Advanced Roadside Impaired Driving Instructor and also certified by the Massachusetts Post Commission. Elijah has also met all the prerequisites for this position, and we look forward to Elijah joining the Lunenburg Police Department. I am requesting that Elijah West be appointed to the position of police officer effective October 13th, 2025. Thank you for that consideration.
All right. Thank you, Chief. And now, if either of you would like to introduce yourselves or speaking of the opportunity to...
I just want to say thank you for this opportunity, and that I'm really looking forward to working for this community.
Great. Thank you.
Pretty much the same thing. I appreciate the opportunity here. And before, coming before you guys, I look forward to serving the community and doing the best that I can for the people of Lunenburg.
All right. Great. Well, you both seem like excellent candidates, and I'm sure you'll both have a positive impact on the community. So thank you for wanting to come and work for Lunenburg. And I'll open it up to any other questions or comments from board members as well.
I'm just very impressed by both candidates.
I was just going to say, thank you for showing interest in Lunenburg and early congratulations.
Most people in this room know this, but you two don't. I used to work for the department up until a year and a half ago. So it holds a dear spot in my heart. It's a great department that you're joining. The chief's fantastic. I used to run the RAD program there, so I'm hoping that maybe it's exciting to hear another certified person coming in and looking for the fresh faces on the department. And congratulations.
All right. Great.
And I know the chief was particularly enthusiastic that we make these appointments as soon as possible. He is eager to have you both joining the department. And he has spoken incredibly well about both of your backgrounds. So I look forward to working with both of you and meeting with you, and I'm sure that you are going to enjoy the great folks and the department who are sitting behind you.
All right. Fantastic. And with that, I will move to ratify the appointments of Grace Kerr as police officer effective October 7th, 2025, and the appointment of Elijah Weiss as police officer effective October 13th, 2025.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. So congratulations. Welcome to the team. And maybe we'll get some pictures when we give them around. All right. So we're going to take a brief recess and get some pictures. I know we have some family here as well, so we'll be back in a couple minutes. Okay. Cool.
We must have been tuned.
Yeah.
All right, I'm just gonna give it a minute.
Were you a fucker too? A field hockey player?
A what?
Did you fucker? Field hockey.
I never heard you call that.
Right?
I was.
Is that a bad term?
No.
Okay.
I wasn't sure what you said.
It sounded like something else.
And not college level.
All right, we are back in open session now. And we're gonna move on to the ratification of the town manager's appointment of Catherine McKenna as Director of Municipal Finance.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just say a couple words through you to the community. Katie McKenna is coming to the town of Lunenburg, having served in the town of Oxford as Finance Director since 2017, where she implemented a GFOA budget amongst other accomplishments. Prior to that, she served since 2014 in the town of Millbury in the same capacity, and Assistant Town Accountant there since 2008. In addition to her professional background, she serves currently as a member of the Select Board in the town of Millbury. So she brings a diverse background to the position, and I am looking forward to her joining our team.
Awesome, as am I. Any questions from the board? Okay. Is there a motion to ratify the town manager's appointment of Catherine McKenna as Director of Municipal Finance?
So moved. Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. And in addition to that, the Select Board also has to make an appointment for her as Town Accountant. So I will move to appoint Catherine McKenna as Town Accountant.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
Just to clarify, that's effective date of October 20th.
Okay.
For both of those appointments to go in line with the employment agreement.
Thank you. All right, up next is ratify the town manager's appointment of Heath Thompson as DPW Heavy Equipment Operator. And this motion's gonna be subject to the completion of all pre-employment paperwork as well. Okay. Any questions on this one? All right, so I will move to ratify the town manager's appointment of Heath Thompson as DPW Heavy Equipment Operator, subject to the completion of all pre-employment paperwork.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, and lastly, we have the ratification of the town manager's appointment of Exaion Fowler as Seasonal Cemetery Laborer. Is there a motion?
A move to ratify town manager's appointment of, how do you say?
Exaion?
Exaion Fowler as Seasonal Cemetery Laborer.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Onto the town manager report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The town manager's report is quite brief this evening. A lot of the work associated with the past several weeks has been unprepping the warrant, which we're going to be getting to shortly. But just one general update, previously I had reported to the board that we were having difficulty finding coverage for the payroll and benefits position. We are executing a temporary contract with a outside service provider, Robert Haff, to carry us through. That contractor will be starting this week and overlapping this week through the end of October, so we will have coverage there while we recruit for the permanent position. The second kind of general update to provide is for those that did not attend last week's community meet and greet at Smokestack Roasters through the Economic Development Committee. It was an absolutely fabulous event, and I just wanna thank publicly the entirety of the Economic Development Committee, but especially Josie Gilchrist, who really made sure that this event occurred this year and carried the weight forward in making sure that that was put together. I heard an anecdote that came from that that reminded me of, if it was only this one connection that happened, how great is that? There is a business owner who wanted to do something physically with their property and thought that they weren't able to, and just from the conversations that they had at that event, realized that there was a path forward through a special permit through the planning board to make the changes that they wanted for their business to be profitable. So, you know, it's those kinds of conversations that are born out of these types of events, and I think it's a really wonderful thing that Lunenburg does, and so wanted to comment on that. For our recruitments, we do have the payroll and benefits position open. I did increase that back up to 36 hours. It was a 40-hour position, we dropped it to 32, I've put it back at 36. I think that that's more appropriate for the needs of the position. So we continue to interview for that. The Assistant Town Accountant position at 32 hours a week, dietary aide at nine, intermittent heavy equipment operator for the wintertime, land use director at 40 hours a week, the children's staff librarian, the interviews have concluded for that position. The Administrative Assistant in the Building Department, that position and offer is going out on. And we have a new opening Administrative Assistant to the Planning Department, that individual has not even made it to your resignations yet on your agenda, but has taken a position in the private sector that unfortunately we cannot compete with. So we are now posted for Administrative Assistant to the Planning Department. We did have a Recreation Director interview and an offer that went out for that, but unfortunately that offer was declined, so we continue to interview for that position. Any questions about the current status of vacancies? Okay. For boards, committees, and commissions to the public, we have on the appointed boards, vacancy on the Agricultural Commission, Architectural Preservation District Commission, Cultural Council, Green Communities Historical Commission, Personnel Board, PAC, Zoning Board of Appeals and Associate Member, and Lunenburg's representative to the First Middlesex Small Town Collaborative. On elected positions, I want to pause for a moment and really highlight the importance of the Board of Assessors. So the Board of Assessors has been running down a member. That is an elected position, there was nobody that ran for that, and it is seeming that they may have some difficulty with their remaining members in maintaining a forum due to some personal issues. So if there is anybody in the community that has any interest at all in assessing and land values and some of the great work that the Board of Assessors is currently undertaking, especially in terms of abatements and exemptions for elders, if anybody has any interest and want to know more about that, I would encourage you to talk to either our assessor, Linda, or to Brian LaFonda, the Chair of the Committee, but we really need somebody to step up in that position particularly. We also have a vacancy on the Planning Boards, Sewer Commission, and Trust Fund Commission.
All right, thank you. Any questions on the town manager report? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to old business, a discussion on special town meeting warrant. So we have the draft of the warrant here in the drive and in front of us, and I would like to begin going through them and voting on as many as possible to include in the warrant, and also any recommendations that we can make. So process-wise, I guess I'll just go over, even though I know the newer members have watched us do this probably at least once. We go through article by article, and each article will need to be voted on to actually include it in the warrant. So that's the first vote, and then separately, we can do a couple things. We can vote to recommend approval, and however that vote goes, it'll go. Or we could vote to defer, and in that case, then we will vote to make a recommendation at town meeting. And normally what we do is meet before town meeting to get those votes done. Or we could not take any action tonight and then bring it up again. I think we'll have two more meetings to go through the warrant, so next week and then the week after that. But that's pretty much it, so when we go through, just for ease of process in the minutes, it's easier to just have one person make those motions. So I will go through and make the motions to include articles in the warrant for the ones that make sense to include at this point, and then we can have any discussion after that. Any questions on that? Okay. So Article A, Authorization to Hear and/or Accept the Reports of Officers and Committees of the Town. So so far, reports that we're tracking are Stormwater Task Force, Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee, and the Master Plan Steering Committee. This is pretty straightforward. So I will move to include Article A in the warrant.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Is there a motion to recommend approval on Article A?
So moved.
Second. All right, any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, Article B, Amending the Fiscal Year 2026 Omnibus Budget. This is a standing article for this special meeting to adjust the annual operating budgets as warranted. Specific questions may be directed to department heads, and these are the transfers known at the time of print. And if there are any, are there?
Well, so originally, in the first draft of this that I had, I had a table embedded that has some potential transfers. I actually have a question out to town council about that particular funding source, whether action at town meeting is even required, because it was appropriation, I don't think we need to do that. But I think that it would be best if we, to avoid confusion, if we leave this article as is drafted in the version, and that at town meeting, in the version you have tonight with no table, and that at town meeting, we have a handout about all of any of the potential transfers that are under this article, because things will develop between the printing and town meeting, and I don't want people to have the false sense that, hey, I was told it was only gonna be these things, but it might be more or less when you get to town meeting, so.
All right, I'll move to include Article B in the warrant.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. And I forgot on the other one, I asked if there was a motion for the recommended approval, just so it's easier with the minutes. I will move to recommend approval for Article B. No. Do you guys not wanna recommend approval on it yet?
Not until we have numbers.
Okay.
That sounds like that's gonna be at a town meeting.
That'll be a defer.
Sorry. Yeah, okay. I will move to defer on Article B.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Sorry, guys, I'm trying to just go through this maybe a little too quickly here, so I'll slow down a little bit. All right, Article C, Authorization to Pay Expenses from a Prior Fiscal Year. So I will move to include this in the warrant.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. And we'll probably vote to defer on this one as well, so I move to defer.
Second.
That's okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
Trying to make the minutes easier.
Yeah. So Article D, Prior Fiscal Year Capital Program Adjustments, we're probably not ready to include this one in the warrant yet.
If I could just talk about this article in general. So we had talked a little bit about moving funds for TCP roof. That was not the recommendation of the Finance or the Facilities Director, but there are some other projects that have bubbled up that have some financial needs, and there are old capital approvals, authorizations from either projects that for one reason or another aren't going forward any longer, but they were in the capital program, and they're either not going forward, the project has been completed, and it came in under budget, and there's remaining funds, and/or it's a situation that something that at the time was, I'm gonna take TCP roof, you know, a $300,000 project, which is now a $1.3 million project, right? So the goal here is to clean up essentially those prior appropriations to fund projects going forward that need some funding. Here's what I'm tracking so far as potential. There is a need to fund, and it's either gonna be here or in Article E, so I'm gonna kinda, because it could be either at this point. There's a stormwater consultant that we are looking to do some work with in regards to the stormwater utility, that we have insufficient funds to bring that to the end. So this could be one of the projects that's funded. There is a potential of a school project that might have, might, I wanna be clear, it might have an overrun, I'm not sure, but if it does have a small overrun, this would be a source to cover that overrun. So essentially, to fund projects that are not, not projects that should be going through the full capital projects, but projects that need to go forward that could use or need funding from somewhere, and the sources are either gonna be free cash, if it's certified by town meeting, or these old capital articles. So at this point, I'm recommending that you don't take any action on this, that this remains in flex, but that's just, that's kind of the mechanics of how I view this article operating.
Okay. Any discussion on this one?
Yeah, so just to be clear, Article D is not end around the capital.
No.
Process.
No, it's to fund from old capital approvals, that's it, but it's not to take projects that otherwise should be going through the capital planning process and fund them. It's not to do that.
So already approved capital projects that might need more funding?
That's, well, or just, like, the stormwater isn't a capital project, it's something that lives outside of capital, but it's really.
Not something that should have gone through capital.
Correct. That's, yeah, correct.
All right. So we'll leave that one for now.
Should we vote to include it in the warrant?
Um, we could, if you guys wanna do that.
Or, well.
Maybe we hold on it?
Yeah.
There was a hesitation.
I would hold on it, just because, I'm not sure, because there's two ways to do it, right? So it's either to fund it through this one or to fund it through the next one.
Okay.
Either projects, so it's, Article D and Article E are almost opposite sides of the same coin. One is using, one would be using free cash to fund the project, the other would be using an old capital appropriation to fund the project.
Right.
Article E, Authorization to Fund Special Projects, there is one that you see indicated on here about the Board of Assessors Phase 1 DOR directives. If the Board recalls, in response to the assessing issue, the Department of Revenue issued a number of directives that the town must comply with before its next full reevaluation, and you recently had the assessor coming in giving an update. So in the annual town meeting, we appropriated $27,500 towards Phase 1 of this effort. We developed an RFP, put that RFP out, and we had no bidders. So we are, we need to get this done, and we are still in the process of exploring the best method by which to get it done. I don't think that putting a higher dollar value here and putting it back out for an RFP is necessarily going to yield fruit, so there is a possibility that, and I talked to Mark Terry at Labor Council today about it, that we can do this in-house, but we would have to do it with a kind of a special temporary employee to do that. So that conversation needs to evolve with Mark Terry a bit more, but there's a potential that instead of handling it here in Article E, we handle it in the context of the SAP.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Can you remind me, when is this due? Is there a deadline for DOR?
Our full reevaluation, so I believe we have, I think we have three years left, but it could be four. But this is just, this was one element of it, and this was to look at the, this particular Phase 1 was to look at all the neighborhood codes and to do a full update of all of the neighborhood codes, where DOR found that there was not the consistency that they would like to see, and also that the neighborhoods are, in some cases, too large and comprise a pretty diverse set of housing that should not all be in one code.
So it's three or four years, but is there a deadline for Phase 1?
No.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we have time, if you wanna bring this.
So Phase 1 was the interim town managers breaking the project up into pieces, but it is not indexed to anything from the, the Department of Revenue, all they care about is that it's done before the reevaluation.
The full, okay.
How we get there?
Okay, good, so we have time.
All right. Article F, Public Access Cable Committee Transfer of Funds, and there's still a question about whether this is needed, at least part of it, or it's entirely, so.
Right, so at the, at the annual town meeting, there was the, there was a transfer of $31,271,000 in a motion. However, those funds had not yet been certified as retained earnings by the state, so there's a technical question about, is there an order of operations issue there? If there is, we will need the first half of this article. If there is not, if that vote still stands, then we will not need the $31,271 portion. Nonetheless, PAC is still seeking the additional $4,000 transfer, so that piece of the article will remain. I would suggest that the board doesn't take action on this until we find the.
Yep. Okay. Article G, Cemetery Commission Transfer of Funds. This article transfers funds from the Cemetery Sale of Watts Fund to the Cemetery Capital Article Fund. Cemetery Commission intends to use these funds to cover expenses associated with headstone straightening and repair, along with other cemetery projects. So this one I will move to include in the warrant.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All right, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. All right, the motion passes unanimously. Anything else that we need to talk to on this one, or you think we're ready? Okay. I move to recommend approval on Article G.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, Article H, Authorization to Appropriate a Sum of Money for Project Estimators. So the Facility Director and Department of Public Works Director are responsible for preparing and submitting capital funding requests. While they can develop cost estimates based on their own expertise and using industry standards, there are occasions when the use of an outside consultant would provide a more accurate assessment of project costs. In the past, some capital projects have exceeded their original estimates. This article seeks to improve the accuracy of cost projections and reduce the likelihood of overruns. We still need a dollar here, though, so we'll probably hold off on voting on this.
Yeah. And are you gonna talk to school?
Yeah, to see if, so Member Mkey had raised to me that is the school included in this project estimator? And I said, not as contemplated, but that may be a good idea, because they would face, they do face similar challenges there. So the goal here is to have a sum of money that lives in a standalone article, as opposed to inside an operating budget, because this is not something that's static. There are gonna be some years that you may need a project estimator, there are some years that you are not going to need a project estimator, so by putting it in an article, you don't have, you can carry it over for a three-year period, and you don't have to index it to an operating budget to allow a little bit more flexibility. I think that, I think that there's been a number of projects that the town has seen where having somebody on the front end before professionally estimating the project would have saved a lot of grief and agony by not having to go back to town meeting for additional funds after something's underway, so.
Is that after an RFP's gone out?
It can be.
So, yeah, so this one I'd like to understand.
Oh, is the project estimator after an RFP?
No, 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 the errors that you've seen, is it after an RFP? Because this wouldn't, an estimator wouldn't help that, right? That's after the.
It's that you take a project in the fall, you run it through the Capital Planning Program, you bring it to May, by the time the RFP is out, it's a year later, like, it's just, and if you don't have the good pulse on what that project really was to build those contingencies, you're gonna be off.
Yeah, I experienced with the Capital Planning Committee, it definitely happened a lot. You had this estimate, you got it approved, and then later on, the price actually was much higher, especially with COVID times.
Will we have a policy or something with when this can be accessed, you know, what the limits are, or have you considered that? Or would it just be up to the authority of the Facilities Director?
I think ultimately it would be up to the authority of the town manager to approve that, right, because it's not, it's not within somebody's budget, but I wasn't contemplating a formalized policy.
Okay.
All right, so we're gonna move on. Article I, Establishment of a Special Education Reserve Fund. This article will establish a Special Education Reserve Fund, which will be used to support the town's special education costs. The fund is a tool to help level the tax impact of fluctuating expenses to fund legally mandated special education services. These funds are used to help fund unanticipated or unbudgeted costs of special education, out-of-district tuition, transportation costs, and recovery high school tuition. Funds can only be expended or transferred out from the reserve fund after a majority vote of the school committee and a majority vote of the Select Board, which is identified with MGL Chapter 40, Section 13E. Monies accumulated in this fund carry over from one fiscal year to another. If established at the November 18, 2025 special town meeting, funds will be transferred into the Special Education Reserve Fund at future town meetings. So this is just establishing it, it's not actually funding it. Any discussion on this one?
I did have a question of, is there ever on these articles, a recommendation by certain groups like the school committee? Would they be included on the printout? What they would recommend?
Well, if it was submitted by the school committee, I kind of view that as support of the article.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In my opinion, it depends. So the Finance Committee is required to make recommendations on certain articles, and the Planning Board is required to make recommendations on certain articles, so that's why we include FinCom. I don't have any issue if the school committee wanted to provide some, I mean, the summary I sent to them, and I had it looked at, but, you know, if they wanted to say, per the school committee and include that in the summary, not an issue, and.
Yeah, if we say, you know, the school committee voted on such or such a date, the vote was unanimous, so we could, if we wanted to.
I think you're right, the fact that it is submitted by the school committee, that shows kind of the support there, too.
Yeah, implicitly, I guess.
I would hope that the school committee would be speaking in favor of this article at the town meeting.
I would imagine they will.
Now, what is the process that this would be replacing?
Good question. So right now, one of the, and anybody else, please feel free to jump in if I get this wrong, especially Mr. Lehman. So right now, it can be difficult, depending on year to year, for the, for the district to anticipate move-ins that may be happening mid-year, that come after a certain date that have a cost. So if there haven't been many other move-ins, and there's room in that operating budget for that purpose, then the operating budget takes care of it. If the, but if, more likely than not, if there is not room to absorb that transfer in, what happens is either the school committee would transfer from another source within their operating budget where there is room, they would come to the Finance Committee for a Finance Committee Reserve Transfer, or like what we did at the May Town Meeting, we had a supplemental appropriation to cover unanticipated move-in costs. So what this reserve fund would do is have a space where it's, where funds can accumulate that are not indexed to an operating budget, they do not need to be used, but has a, has a, basically an account that can hold these funds, that if there is one of these unbudgeted move-ins, or multiple of these unbudgeted move-ins, you don't have to go to town meeting to move the funds. You would have the vote of the school committee and the vote of the Select Board to authorize the transfer out of this, essentially bank account for this purpose, to cover that cost. It gives them flexibility in budgeting. There is a, in the law, it states that the total amount of the fund cannot exceed 2% of the actual net school spending, so there is a cap, so this isn't something that can just accumulate and accumulate, but it gives the flexibility that the district, I think, needs to be able to operate without having to go to town meeting for that transfer. Now, town meeting will have, so this, this act, if this is voted, establishes the fund. It doesn't put any money into the fund. In talking to the superintendent, the intent is that how to fund this would be coming at a future town meeting. How to fund this, however that looks, would be going to town meeting as well. So whether we say we're gonna appropriate X dollars a year to this, whether we're gonna say we're gonna transfer always Y, you know, whatever remains in line Y to this, however that looks, that still very much needs to be discussed, but would need to be approved by town meeting. So this, I guess, if you voted yes for this, this doesn't mean that it's funded, and it doesn't take away town meeting's role in funding it. What it does is, once town meeting has approved the funding, it says you don't need to come back to us, we've approved the funding to go into this pot for this purpose, now between the school committee and the Select Board, do what you need to do to pay the bills. Now, between the school committee and the select board, do what you need to do to pay the bills.
So, I thought I heard the superintendent say that limit of 2% net school spending was an annual, not accumulative limit.
I believe, I believe it's the total account.
It doesn't matter for the article before us now, but.
Okay, the balance, hold on. The balance in the reserve fund cannot exceed 2% of the annual net school spending of the school district.
Oh, wow, so the total amount. So, because I've heard these out-of-district placements can be.
A lot of money.
Over a million dollars.
It's, it's a small safety net. It's not going to be.
Yeah, this isn't going to.
It's not going to encompass everything.
No, you still need to budget. You still need to, like, the school district will still need to be budgeting for out-of-district placements.
I think it's, and it's still really more for the surprises, it's the, the mid-years.
But those costs are fixed, is, that's mandated, right? Like, the town would, has to pay those.
I wouldn't say it's fixed.
They're not fixed.
I mean, it's mandated.
Yeah, you could have a hundred students, that you have to educate those students.
Right.
And if they're high needs, and it could be out-of-district placement, too, where they have to go to a different school.
I guess my only concern is if that, if that account was at its max, that maybe they would soften the budget for, you know, special education anticipating, you know, basically could fall into the regular budget. Like, like if you unders, if you underfunded the, was it special, special education? If that, if that account went light?
I think that they would most likely run into difficulties if they intentionally underfunded that line because you're going to have costs, substantial costs. But to that point, I, in my opinion, there, there remains a, a fair amount of discussion that needs to happen about what the funding mechanism is, what the appropriate funding level is. And so all of that will be borne out before we bring that to the voters for consideration. This is basically going to the bank, opening a bank account, and not depositing one penny.
Well, I think it's a good idea, so I will move to include it in the warrant.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Are we ready to recommend approval on this? To vote to recommend approval?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so I move to recommend approval on Article I.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, Article J Twenty-One Main Street Easement. So we're aware of this, the rampant town hall encroaches on the property next door. So this is going to authorize the select board to obtain a permanent easement for the area of the encroachment for the purposes of providing access to town hall. I move to include Article J in the warrant.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, was that including it in the warrant?
That was including.
Okay, I move to recommend approval on Article J.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right. Article K Transfer the Care, Custody, and Control of Kids' Kingdom and the Land It Is On From the School Committee to the Select Board. So a summary on this one. Kids' Kingdom has been a special part of the community for nearly 20 years, built as a memorial to Lunenburg resident Connor Laurens, who tragically passed away at age seven. The playground continues to hold deep sentimental value for many families and has been enjoyed by many generations of Lunenburg children. At the 2016 Annual Town Meeting, voters transferred the TC Passios Elementary School and the Brooks House from the school committee to the select board, while the school committee retained care, custody, and control of the Kids' Kingdom parcel. In 2025, Town Meeting authorized funding for the design of additional parking to support the Adult Activity Center. While the town has not yet engaged a designer, it has been suggested that the new parking configuration may need to expand into the area where Kids' Kingdom currently sits. This transfer does not represent a decision to definitively relocate Kids' Kingdom, and that decision will only be made after a substantial opportunity for public input.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, there was a community comment at the last, I believe at the last meeting about this. And so after Dave Rogers had shared his concerns about the future of this playground, I did ask specifically a community member who is in touch with the Laurens family to reach out to them and to talk about this potential relocation. And so to be clear, while the relocation conversations have initially been discussed, there, there is no decision to permanently move or remove the playground. This community member did speak with Mr. and Mrs. Laurens and explained that the town is considering adding the parking lot next to the playground, which could be, mean using part of the space where the playground currently sits. So during the conversation, Connor's parents shared that they understand the community's needs and were not opposed to the possibility of relocating the playground. And they also mentioned that a special time capsule is buried beneath the memorial monument, which was meant to be opened in 2026. Which is 20 years after it was initially placed. So as we move forward with this project, I want to be clear that we are not looking to remove this playground, and that we're hoping that we can use this as an opportunity to, again, once again, highlight Connor's life and to create a meaningful space for children to continue to play in the community.
Right. So, I mean, without doing this, right, or I should say it differently, by doing this, it'll allow us to continue exploring the options for the expanded parking situation there.
So essentially, this does not need to happen at this town meeting.
Okay.
So, right now, the, if, if you see in your meeting packets, in the folders, there is this, there is an old schematic that went to town meeting when everything was transferred on the, on this parcel. And there was one little carve-out that was retained by the school committee, which means that anytime we're talking about anything, any of the decisions that need to be made or discussed really need to be made by the school committee in the current status. So as we are exploring the parking design, either the school committee is going to need to be in those conversations and planning around this, or the school committee would transfer the playground to the town, to its select board, so that we can be a little bit more nimble in those conversations and decision-making.
Mm-hmm. Understood. Well.
At, at some point, it will need to happen.
Yeah.
It doesn't need to happen.
I mean, the parking situation there is terrible, and on a busy day, you can clearly see that, so.
Well, not so much the, the parking. What need, at some point, the transfer will need to happen, whether it's at this town meeting, May town meeting, or a future town meeting. At some point, if this project is to move forward, the school committee would need to transfer the playground.
Who is currently maintaining that playground?
It's a little bit of, it's a little bit of both, but we did have, my, my initial concern with this is the age of the playground, frankly, and that I would be concerned that moving it would be cost prohibitive. We did have a certified playground safety instructor or inspector come out and look at it, and it's actually in very good condition. Some of, when moved, a lot can be repurposed. It's like the main frames that things attach to that we would need new. But the condition is not in poor condition. I think that the playground project and the transfer, we would be looking at something, though, that's different in a way than what's there, because I would think that we would be looking, if we're going to move it, at surfacing for ADA. So, you know, that, that, that's probably a year plus down the road for.
I was just thinking, you know, in the interim, you know, does the school committee go out, I mean, the, the school department go out and like clean it up if there's issues, or does the town do that? If there's, you know, any, is there any maintenance that happens on it in the interim? And would that now fall under facilities?
As far as I understand, it's been a little bit of a blend. It's technically the school, but it's been a combined effort. There hasn't been a substantial, like, replace X. But, but it, so it would, it would 100% to, to put a finer point on it, it would 100% come to the school for maintenance. I mean, to the town for maintenance, if this happens.
All right, I will move to include Article K in the warrant.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously, and I will also move to recommend approval on Article K.
Second.
Any additional discussion?
Yeah, have you talked to the school committee about, so they haven't?
They have, no.
School department hasn't weighed in at all? Should we do that before?
I can, I'm happy to.
I don't know.
All right, those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, Article L Architectural Preservation District Amendments. Where do we start on this one? So do you want to speak to where we're at on the draft here?
Sure. Let me do my best.
Yeah.
So, I think the conversations might have started initially when Heather Lemieux was Town Manager with members of the Architectural Preservation District Committee. The interim Town Manager had worked last fall with the APDC to start to bring an article forward. That, for a number of reasons, got tabled, delayed, and now here it is. So, essentially what this does is you have the Historic Commission, and you had the Architectural Preservation District Commission. The APDC oversaw anything within the APD, the Architectural Preservation District. So they make all the decisions around the Demodulition Delay Bylaw, all the things relative to the APD. What this does is, let me say what it does not do, what this article does not do, which I think is probably where folks may be concerned, is it does not expand the footprint of the APD. It does not give any powers that did not, weren't already vested in another. What this does is it eliminates the APDC and says, in the APDC's place, the Historic Commission can do what the APDC did in the APD. So it's, it's not that the Historic Commission can now take and expand the APD across the town. It's not that they can apply rules beyond the APD. There is one item to point out, and that because it comes under the purview of the Historic Commission, which is a statutory charge, Historic Commissions are enabled by statute, is under 113-1A1, you will see that the word after, so preserving, restoring, and protecting groups of historically and/or architecturally significant. Because it would be going to the Historic Commission, the "and/or" architecturally significant has to be removed, because they don't have, Historic Commission doesn't have jurisdiction over something that may be brand-new but architecturally significant. Other than that, it largely just transfers the authority of the APDC to the Historic Commission. The proponent of the article has looked at it, has had a conversation with Town Council, and I, I believe is satisfied with the language.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have thoughts on this one?
Not particularly.
Hmm.
I, I, I mean, I think that I have heard some concerns, and the concerns were about a broadening, which I'm not concerned that this does not, this does not broaden. So that, that's really my biggest concern. I, I think that I would want to hear from the Historical Commission specifically that they are interested in absorbing this.
I'm pretty sure that request to them to actually read through this has already been sent out, right?
I don't know what.
Or we can, or that was the intention, right?
So if.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I will say, like, the actual language changes here weren't as complicated as I maybe assumed that they would be. So it pretty much gets rid of the APDC, and it replaces any reference to it with the Historical Commission, and then removes anything related to architecture from its charge, so that it's just specifically for historical significance. So in that sense, you know, I, I think it's fine to propose, it's been requested, we can put it before the town.
You can have the proponent come forward.
Yeah, we could. So where are we at? Have, have members read through this, are we?
I'm not, I'm not convinced it's, it's like an emergency. It seems like it's, it's coming up pretty quick. Like, I think it would go to.
Well, it's been, I will just say it's been worked on for over a year now.
Yeah, but I mean, I think a better, you know, I'd open, I'd be open to a more, like, a more open vetting process. Like, is there any value in having it go before the person, I mean, I'm sorry, Bylaw Review Committee?
Um.
It is a bylaw.
Maybe, I, you know, we haven't gotten this far in the process yet. I will say that we are having, like, very productive conversations, so we might discuss this at some point. Whether or not we actually want to consider this, I don't know. We've sort of gone back and forth in our discussion of, like, the scope we want to take on, and in a lot of sense, we're kind of saying, well, if this is your bylaw, so-and-so committee, then you recommend the changes. You know, we'll look through it and we'll discuss it, maybe we'll make some, like, minor tweaks, but we're not going to make, like, substantial tweaks to the substance of it. So I, my, if I had to guess, I would say, no, probably the Bylaw Review Committee wouldn't want to make a recommendation like this. They would probably say, actually, it should come from the APDC and the Historical Commission.
Yeah, because I think if, if, if all the interested parties, like Planning Board, even if the Bylaw Committee did a brief overview of it, it just seems like articles like this will create a lot of, you know, concern and discussions at town meeting floor. And I think, you know, a better vetting process would be, I mean, I know it's, time-wise, it's been going on for a long time, but.
So that, you know, just to that point, the vetting process is town meeting.
Yeah, I was going to say.
So it is, it is, in terms of my view, I mean, there's certainly articles here that have sponsored by the Town Manager next to them, right? I have a vested interest to make sure that folks are informed about the context of what those articles are seeking to do, so that they can make an up-down vote on them. Similarly, I would say that if there's a proponent of an article, that is their role, just like there's, the, the Planning Board is bringing forward the MBTA article. That's not for, in my opinion, for the select board to go and shop and to socialize the proponent. So if the proponent doesn't do that, well, then town meeting usually speaks.
And I also don't want to speak for the proponent here, the proponent really wants this to go before the town. You know, he's tried to, the proponent has tried to get this done last special town meeting. It wasn't completed by then, and then at the annual as well, and now here we are again. This is the third attempt to bring it to a town meeting, so.
And that's one of the reasons why I would agree with putting this on the warrant, too. It is submitted by the Architectural Preservation District Chair. I would like to have them speak to it, and the public can speak and have their opportunity, too.
So you said something tonight that I hadn't thought about. The architectural aspect. So basically, if you have a building in the APD that's not historical, you could have whatever architectural design you want?
It's, it's that the, if you go back, from what I understand, to, it's a definition section. So contributing property, definition.
And this is where the 70-year comes in?
Yep. So any building or stone wall within an APD which is older than 75 years and contributes to the Architectural Preservation District's historical character as determined by the Historical Commission. So it, it does remove, so it's, it's limited, I guess, in that it must be 75 years or older, and. So they would not, so if you have a 20-year-old home.
Yeah.
That has architectural significance but is 20 years young, they would not have jurisdiction over it.
I hadn't appreciated that nuance. I, I don't know how, I don't know how the public would feel about it, but that is something to think about.
I'm at least in favor of bringing it to the public, and, you know, I don't think it's a bad thing for town meeting to really dig into this and, you know, we'll see what they want to do with it. So that's where I'm at. So I'll move to include Article L in the warrant.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. The motion passes unanimously, and we can just take no action. I would recommend on not voting. I don't think we should defer, I don't think we should recommend approval. We can bring it up again and see what happens at our future meetings when we go through the warrant. Are you okay with that?
Mr. Chairman, do you want to invite?
Well, yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, to invite to the next meeting for somebody to come and speak to this.
Right, so that's why I don't want to defer, we can leave it open.
So we're just gonna hold it?
Yep.
I think that to speak to Glenn's way, to invite them in, to talk about it, that could at least help get some more visibility into it again.
All right, Article M, Notice of Town Meeting. So this is changing, printing out the warrant and sending it to all of the voting residents in town, and instead, we would mail a notification instead, and that's pretty much it, right? No other key details here on this one. I will move to include, which one is this again, Article M in the warrant.
Second.
Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Do we want to vote to recommend approval on this one tonight?
I can, I have one, I just want to confirm with town manager, because it's not, it won't be written in the article, but people can request a printed copy.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I just want to make it clear, we're not going to make it any, we don't want to make it difficult for people to get if they can't physically get out and get a hard copy or can't get online.
So we are happy to, we will mail, and if the Select Board would like to create a policy around that, that's fine, but that we, we will mail them, you know, if it's under 20, we might even hand-deliver them. Yep.
Yeah, I do think maybe we could do a policy on it, too, because I have actually, like, talked to a couple of people on this, and one thing I heard was, you know, it should be also at the library and, like, more places than I think we've discussed so far, so, you know, I think those details of, like, how we make it available and where, you know, we could.
I don't think it would hurt to have a copy at each town building.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I do like this, I like moving forward, saving trees, saving money.
Yeah. Anything else that you're sort of working with town council on for this language here?
No.
All right, I will move to recommend approval of Article M then.
Second.
Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. Article N, Noise Ordinance. So a little bit of background on this one. This is being submitted at the request of a resident who was experiencing continued difficulty with a neighbor who was playing very loud noises intentionally, essentially, and engaging with the police. We, or, or the resident was informed that we weren't able to enforce anything because we didn't have anything on the books. So that's why this is here. I know there's a lot, I have read through it, and I know we should probably dig in a little bit. Have members read through this and have any initial reactions to anything that's in this proposed bylaw yet?
I have not read through this one yet for a moment.
Because I figured that some of these, you know, will have to do over the course of multiple meetings, so I'm okay if people need more time to really read through this, and then we can discuss it a little more in depth. All right.
That's fine.
Yeah, I think that was, okay, cool. Article O, MBTA Zoning Act Compliance. I don't have much to say on this one, other than it was submitted by the Planning Board. Historically, we have had him come in, but we can also, you know, there, they have public hearings on all of the articles that they propose. There have been informational sessions on this as well that we can watch. So if there are any questions, you know, we could always engage with them through that method as well on our own. So are we, I mean, we have to include a warrant, so I'll, I'll move to include Article O in the warrant.
Second.
Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Are we ready to vote to recommend on this one as well?
This, this is the written compliance, right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what?
Written compliance approach that the information session was about.
Yeah, so they're gonna zone over Chi-Town.
Yeah.
They do have a public hearing on Monday, October 27th. We, could we wait till after that?
We can, yeah, I'm fine with that. Okay, so we'll hold on.
Does this have to go to the printer?
Oh, wait, what was the date again?
The 27th.
Oh, never mind, sorry, no, we can't wait that long, sorry.
So for approval, you can't, you, you, so, so the Select Board, you have to include this on the warrant? This was submitted by the Planning Board to the Select Board under 48. You have to include this on the warrant? You can wait on your recommendation until after?
Well, that's what he was meaning.
Oh, so the recommendation.
I know we have to.
Yeah.
Sorry, when you said that, for some reason in my head, I heard next Monday, and that, I was like, oh, okay, that's fine, but no, we can't wait that long. We really need to do all these votes by the 21st.
But you could defer, you could defer to town meeting on the recommendation.
Oh, is that what you were recommending?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that. So I'll move to defer on Article L.
Second.
Those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
I just want to clarify, because we can bring this back up again, even though we just deferred. You can, after the 27th, even though we've already gone for print, you can take votes, recommend it, you don't have to wait till town meeting. So we can, we can make some recommendations in November, even if they're not making it on print.
Well, sure, yeah, I have no issue with that. All right, Article P, this is another Planning Board article, removing bituminous concrete requirements from common driveways, so my understanding of this is that it's just striking out this one sentence that removes the requirement for a common driveway to be paved with a three-inch minimum thickness layer of bituminous concrete. Why that is necessary, I cannot speak to that, but I will move to include Article P in the warrant.
Second.
Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Glenn, do you know if there's also a public hearing on this one that's?
Yes, same, same date.
Yeah, okay, so we can vote to defer this one, or?
Mr. Chairman, through you, two, two men from the crowd, do you know anything, for the public that might be listening, do you know anything about why?
Well, they did a, I can't remember if it was Northfield, but they, I think you could have five driveways, and they did a special permit to add a sixth, and they wanted to do it with, you know, crushed stone. And the Planning Board was open to doing that, it just they couldn't because of that sentence.
Okay.
So they, they were kind of in agreement with the applicant's request, so that's why they brought it forward.
Okay. So where are we at? Do we want to defer? Do we want to vote to recommend?
I would defer to after the hearing.
Yeah? Okay, I will move to defer on Article P.
Second.
Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, Article Q, Amendments to the Salary Administration Plan, Position, Titles, and Grades.
Okay, so if you, so the two things which we are planning to bring forward are placing the position of conservation agent onto the SAP. We have had conversations with the clerical union on this, and so this position is coming out of the clerical union and is going on to the SAP if passed, that is the intent. And the other is to convert back the title of Land Use Director to Director of Planning and Economic Development, but no other substantive change there. I'm asking that you don't take any action on this particular article tonight, because if you remember back to Article E about the Board of Assessors, there was the possibility that we handle how to take care of that project through the SAP. If we handle it through the SAP, there will be that one additional title here.
Okay.
All right, any discussion on that? Article R, Salary Administrative Plan SAP Amendments. Okay, so there's a couple of things here. You'll see in the drive, I have it printed out, let me just look in here and see the titles.
Everybody has all the printouts.
Oh, it's all printed out, too? Okay.
Yeah. They just don't, so they have the printout of, so the board has the printout of the Personnel Committee and the summary.
The table of all of the changes, too.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so we can start with this one, the Personnel Committee Dissolution Research. So this is the product of the HR Director and the town manager's research into other municipalities, and which ones have personnel committees, don't, and the actions taken related to that. So I'll just read through this. So across the Commonwealth, towns are sunsetting personnel boards/committees and consolidating HR into a professional management through the town manager and HR staff. This shift improves compliance, speed, reduces fragmentation, clarifies accountability, and aligns with modern labor law and risk management. There has been sustained action in this area rather than a one-off trend. So the Lunenburg Personnel Committee, the SAP was established in 1965. In 2009, we went from a CAFO to a town manager. In 2019, an assistant town manager was hired. The Personnel Committee is comprised of five members who are town residents. It's appointed by the Select Board for a term of three years. Town employees may be called as a subject matter expert or non-voting member, and it was disbanded in May, on May 29, 2024. So in the event that the Personnel Committee does not have enough members to conduct business, the town manager shall have the authority to administer the Salary Administration Plan. So without the Personnel Committee, it's all falling on the town manager. So the present role of the Lunenburgs Personnel Committee, and this is per the SAP, to administer the provisions of the SAP except for such duties as may be specifically assigned by statute, town charter, or bylaws to other town officers, boards, and committees. So what does that actually mean? So in Bylaw Section 70-2, it says, "Issue, amend, or revoke administrative orders for the purpose of giving effect to the provisions of this bylaw and for the purpose of giving effect to the provisions of such other bylaws and votes to the town pertaining to personnel administration, as said committee may be responsible for administering and/or enforcing." So they can issue pretty much memos essentially regarding the enforcement of the bylaw. 70-2 shall have access to all facts, figures, records, and other information relating to the personnel of all town departments. Okay, so they get information. 70-5 may tentatively add new job titles and descriptions to the SAP, establishing grades with minimum and maximum wage or salary brackets and reclassifying existing jobs, revising the description in the minimum, maximum wage and salary brackets effective from said action to the next town meeting, so it'll have to be voted on by the town meeting anyway. Any increase in wages or salaries under this section shall be effective only if funds are available for the purpose and approved by the Finance Committee and the Select Board. 70-6 determines that a reclassification will be consistent with the provisions of the SAP. 70-7 maintains written job descriptions of the jobs or positions in the SAP, describing the essential functions, requirements, and duties. 70-7, every three years, review the wage and salary schedules of all positions in the SAP and recommend to the Select Board any action deemed desirable to maintain a fair and equitable pay level. 70-11 approves one or more step rate increases at the time of promotion on recommendation of a department head. 70-12, the chair of the Personnel Committee may, from time to time, consult with the town manager on hiring employees beyond the minimum of the rate range of the job for which the new employee is hired, based on the employee's qualifications and experience or market conditions. 70-12 approves any propose, proposal by the town manager to pay the new employee above step four. In the absence of a Personnel Committee, there is no authorization for the town manager or any other entity to approve hiring a new employee above step four, so it's just up to the town manager. And 70-14 approves pay adjustment sections in the budget submitted by department heads in accordance with SAP, and finally, provides consultation on the sick leave bank policy prior to adoption by the Select Board. So there's a couple rationales for the change. The first is professionalized HR outpaces volunteer board models. So the demands are, modern-day HR compliance are complex, fast-paced, and ever-changing. FMLA interplay, FLSA and exempt duty tests, ADA/interactive processes, wage and hour, remote work risk, pay equity audits, et cetera. They all require professional expertise and the ability to respond rapidly. Personal boards are vestiges from pre-manager eras and a duplication on HR staff. Lunenburg employs full-time HR staff and has dedicated labor council. Oversight remains with the bodies such as the Select Board, the Finance Committee, town meeting, in addition to the requirements of state and federal law. Second, unified accountability and faster cycle times. So splitting authority among the volunteer board, whether advisory or with the power of approval, and a manager who executes slows hiring decisions, classification updates, pay plan changes, and policy rollouts. Town finance and DLS-style reviews routinely flag duplicative boards as an unnecessary bureaucratic layer. Per the Division of Local Services, when a community assigns human resource responsibilities to a particular person, generally speaking, a personnel board becomes moot. And third, there is better legal and compliance posture and risk control. So when an HR misstep occurs, the town, not volunteer board members, bears a liability and costs. Aligning authority with the manager who controls operations reduces ambiguity and litigation risk. Again, per the Division of Local Services, the town ultimately is best served having a professional manager who can develop and oversee a full-time structured personnel management program, and this approach recognizes the growing importance of and risks inherited in personnel issues. So I know that was a lot, and in addition to that, we also have several dozen examples from communities who have taken this action and also some reflections on that as well.
So just to comment on those reflections, if you, those comments that you see associated with those communities are either a direct quote from an email that we received from that community, or it's from the materials that they have available online at the time of their town meeting.
So I know it's a lot, I really wanted to read this for the board, for the public, just so they understand the amount of research that has gone into this. So I'm just going to open it up to the board and to see what any discussion or reactions there are tonight.
I'm fully in favor of this action. I appreciate all of the work that you guys have done. I think that this is one of those things where volunteers, first of all, we don't have any on that board, which is creating issues, but I don't know that HR is the place to have a volunteer board. I am fully in support of this action.
Yeah, I think it belongs with HR, are we going to talk about the proposed revisions?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna get into that soon, yep.
I would agree. I think it's changing with the times, and you can see the data that follows that we should be doing this.
All right, just wanted to see where we're at, and with that, I think we can proceed. So this other document we have here is a summary of proposed Personnel Bylaw Revision. So it's a table that goes through all the changes, and we can just go through and discuss them.
Okay, so first of all, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving that great lead-up on the Personnel Committee history. You know, this document that we've started to develop, we plan to continue to work on this and make this available in advance of town meeting so that voters are aware of what the actual duties are. I actually heard somebody arguing in favor of keeping the Personnel Board the other day because they handle grievances, and as you can see, that that is not one of the roles of the Personnel Committee. So this is a clear document that shows what their roles are and can explain the rationale. The other document that we will be continuing to develop is the summary of the proposed bylaw changes to make it very simple for folks to understand, because there is a lot of redlining in this document that doesn't necessarily do as much as might otherwise be indicated by the amount of red. As I start to go through this, I want folks to consider kind of a couple of different approaches that we could take. So we can bring this to town meeting as one omnibus, up or down vote. We can bring this to town meeting in pieces, that we want to say, we want town meeting to consider this element and this element, so that folks, more of an a la carte approach. Or we can say, we want to bring X, Y, Z package now, and we're not, we're feeling that we're not quite ready for the rest. So just, they're currently all in one, it doesn't have to be, okay? So if we're going through section by section of the SAP, Section 7.1, the change there is to remove the reference to the Personnel Committee, that's the only change. 7.2 is the, it's a long, it's almost a full-page redline, it's the definition, composition of the Personnel Committee. It doesn't go into what their duties are, per se, it goes into what their composition is in their meeting, so that entire section would be stricken. Section 7.3, just add some clarifying language. Section 7.3 is classification and salary schedule, and it states the position of all employees in the service of town, to clarify the position of all employees classified as full-time, part-time A or part-time B. This is just a, more of a cleanup change. I actually question if we need to add intermittent or seasonal there, put that question out for Mark Terry, but. Okay, now we get into more substantive changes in 7.5, new or changed positions. So one of the things that the chairman spoke about in reading the duties. in reading the duties of the Personnel Committee is essentially, in between town meetings, if we want to make a change to the classification or compensation of somebody's grade, if we wanted to do a regrade or to add a new job description, the Personnel Committee could do that in absence of town meeting approval until the next town meeting. It keeps that as is, same structure, but instead of the Personnel Committee grants that authority to the town manager. I want to be really practical, though, here. I currently have a position that you will see, that you just heard about, the conservation agent position that's going on that, in the absence of a Personnel Committee, I could take that action on my own right now. The practical reality is, in most cases, it doesn't make sense to create a new position, hire somebody into it, only to go to town meeting in two months and have town meeting not approve it, right? So the practical reality is, in most cases, you're not going to make that step because you're going to be hiring somebody to not get the authority later. Also striking from that section, the language about any increases in wage or salaries under this section shall be approved only if funds are available for the purpose. Well, that's what the law requires. And approved by the Finance Committee and Select Board. Increases are approved by town meeting. Finance Committee retains their advisory authority. I'm not really sure what that language, frankly, was really driving at previously. Okay, Section 7-6 said that the Personnel Committee could reclassify folks if in compliance with the provision of SAP. It changes that to the town manager. Again, reclassifications ultimately approved by town meeting voters. Next section was 7-7, Job Descriptions and Interpretations. This requires the Human Resource Director to maintain written job descriptions. We also added a sentence to say that job descriptions shall be reviewed at a minimum upon the exiting of an employee. And then the next section required the Personnel Committee to at least every three years review the wage and sal, or to every three years, to review the wage and salary schedules of all positions in the plan. We added at least every three years to make that a floor, not a ceiling. The Human Resources Director shall do that evaluation. The other piece that we added here, we talked about in this section currently is, that's the three-year omnibus review of the class and comp schedule to make sure it's still in line. But every year, there's recommendations on a cola, and that was absent here. So we added the language, the Human Resources Director shall make recommendations to the town manager and Select Board regarding the annual cost of living for consideration at town meeting. All right. We still, on 7-10, there's no changes currently. I do want to check with, which is the provision on layoff procedure and recall procedure. I want to check with Labor Council just that as is written is appropriate. Okay, Section 70-11, Transfers and Promotions. We changed it to Transfers, Promotions, and Reclassifications. Here is clarification language more than actual change. The language about how you plot an employee on the pay scale when they are getting a promotion as written was vague. So this makes it very clear that when an employee is getting a promotion, that we will plot them on the next step that's closest to but not less than their current rate of pay and not, and here's the key part, and not less than the step increase they would have received if they had remained in their prior grade. So there were a few cases, because of the way that the language was written, that I was essentially saying, well, we just gave so-and-so this. Actually, it's the same language, but more in the reclass as opposed to a promotion. We just reclassed this position, and they would have, if we didn't reclass them the way you're interpreting this, they would have done better staying in their own class with their step. So we're making it very clear how that is supposed to be applied so that there cannot be an interpretive issue. But that is a codification of practice as opposed to a deviation. The Personnel Committee, under this section, was authorized to grant one or more step increases based on the recommendation of the department head. That would be the town manager. And again, if the department had felt there needed to be a trial period before the probation or before the promotion, the Personnel Committee was approving that. That would go to the town manager.
Can I ask you a question on this one?
Hmm.
So what if you have someone who's at a role that maybe they have higher qualifications for, and you're hiring for this new position that has more responsibilities, that's maybe more aligned with their education and their experience? This is limiting us to only give them that one step? But if you hired someone external, we can go up higher, correct?
Yes, unless, so that's a good point, actually. Unless they would otherwise be qualified for an employment agreement under the.
I just, I just don't like it. This has come up before.
Okay.
Where if you have, that exact situation. So say someone's an administrative assistant, but they actually are qualified for, I don't know, a more managerial role. They have the years and the experience. If you went external, maybe you're going to hire someone at Step 6, but this person is only at Step 3. This is limiting us to putting them at Step 4 of their new grade when they really could have gotten higher had it been external.
So you want, you would like to see, if I'm echoing you back, the flexibility of hiring beyond a certain, a lever that could be authorized.
If they were qualified.
It, okay. Mr. Chairman, through you, can I ask how other people feel on that? Because I have a way to draft around that, to give that permission if folks are inclined.
I would support that.
So are you saying someone internal could apply for an opening that's maybe two steps above or above what their promotion would be? What's the difference between applying if there's an opening versus being?
So say, if I use the police department, my, the role that was the front desk position is lower than the executive assistant position. But the person that's in that front desk position could be completely qualified, and maybe they started at a lower, lower step. But you know, say we went out for the new position. Maybe we're going to hire them at Step 5, but this person is only going to be at like Step 2. I just don't like that.
So a different step in that same role.
Same, if they were moving to a new role, I don't like.
Cause that's what it sounds. To say it differently.
Yeah, I can't explain it.
Let me try, if I can. This is prescriptive when it comes to promotions. So this tells you, if you are hiring as written, that the person will be plotted on the chart at whatever their step is plus whatever they would get. It is going to be whatever, when you go down to that step, it is going to be that. Ms. Moore's point is that if that same person happened to not be getting a promotion, and they happened to be coming from external, it would be possible that based on their skills and qualifications, we would hire them at a step, grade and step, the same grade, but at a step higher or many steps higher than what this prescribes. So this is rigid in its application in a way that hiring an external candidate would not be. And so I think what she's saying is, that same flexibility that we give for hiring above a Step 4, we should have some mechanism to allow if it dictates.
Probably won't happen.
Like a skip level promotion or something? Like, it sounds like they were hired at the wrong level to start.
Yeah, or maybe it's a different, maybe they have, you know, a degree in planning, and they were working in a different department. There's been situations where this could apply. I just don't like that you're limited to one step, the way it's written. Not saying we have to.
So skip level promotion, kind of.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
That's what we.
So it's that, so this says, in a different way. On the grid, this says, if you are here, you're going to be plotted down here. If you were an external candidate, you could be anywhere between Steps 1 and 8. This may say, based on where you are, you're coming in at a Step 6, and that's it if you're an internal candidate. Where based, you know, if somebody was working in, you know, for whatever reason, in a job that their skills and qualifications exceeded, they would be limited if they were an internal candidate in a way that an external candidate for the same job would not be limited.
So the internal folks should be evaluated the same way as an external.
Yeah.
Basically.
Which is why I don't.
Which I'm surprised that doesn't just happen.
All right, so.
I'm fully in support of that.
I would agree.
I don't know how you are going to word to miss that, but I would love to see something.
She'll figure it out.
All right. Let me see if there's, okay. The other thing in this Section 70-11 is there was no language about reclassification. I think, I think in this one, though, if a position is reclassified, you would want that prescriptive plotting. So on 70-11, if an employee is reclassified to a higher grade, the employee will be placed to the higher grade at their rate in the new grade and be placed at the step that is closest to but not less than their current rate of pay and not less than the step increase that they would have received had they remained in their prior grade. I think we do want that prescriptive nature here for reclass.
That's the role staying.
Yeah. Okay, all right. So then next section is 70-12. Currently as written, the town manager, if going to hire past a Step 1, must consult with the chair and the chair alone of the Personnel Committee. It removes that consultation. And presently, this is the one area that in the absence of a Personnel Committee, the town manager cannot act, and that's to hire above a Step 4. So I wrote this in two ways, not knowing how the board was going to feel about the Personnel Committee. But if we are indeed moving forward with eliminating the Personnel Committee at this point, the Select Board then would take that role to approve a hire above a Step 4. Okay. All right. The Special Merit Award section would be completely eliminated so that it can apply to all personnel, not just SAP personnel. Okay. 70-12-1, I understand this is something that the interim town manager had put in on recruitment incentives. Allow, so the current incentive says that we may deposit up to five days of leave time, which shall be charged against earned leave time in the coming year with which employment begins. We're about to talk about vacation in a minute, and so if, if the board and town meeting is inclined to make the changes that are proposed relative to vacation, this incentive no longer becomes an incentive because it just doesn't. So what we were trying to do is broaden that. So incentives may include, but not limited to the depositing of up to five days of vacation time, a one-time sign-on bonus, or other similar limited allowances. Does the Select Board want to approve these? Or not, I guess, is my question. So right now, it's a little open-ended. Do we want to add with the approval of the Select Board on recruitment incentives?
No, I personally, I'd be okay with you making that determination based on your expertise in the market.
I'd like to, I think. Well, the Select Board's approving the hiring above a Step 4, right?
Well, yeah.
Would that Step 4 limitation hurt you in candidate recruitment?
Step 4 limitation, without having the ability to go on? Yeah. If you're hiring an employee who maybe isn't eligible for an employment agreement, and they have years of experience, you're not hiring. I'm not hiring a Step, I'm not hiring under a Step 4.
But if you have to get approval from the Board of Selectmen, is that going to hinder your opportunity to?
Oh, you will be very available for an emergency meeting in 48 hours if necessary, I'm sure.
And there's four roughly halfway up?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't, I don't think that's necessary. I think if she just advised the board.
Okay. Yeah, I'll need to think about these two a little more, honestly, but.
They kind of go together in my mind.
Yeah.
Like, I don't, I don't see separating one versus the other.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Oh, that either the board approves all.
It's all or none.
Right.
Yeah, that's how I kind of.
It's both part of the incentive to.
I welcome the board's approval, if, if so inclined. Okay, Grievance Procedure, Section 70-13. Adding a paragraph here that just kind of outlines what grievances are a little bit and the goal of the grievance. So I want to read that. "The town will promptly consider and respond to employee grievances. The preferred method of addressing grievances is informally to correct the cause of the grievance and encourage employees and supervisors to address and resolve problems as they arise. If the cause of the grievance cannot be resolved informally, then the process below should be followed." So originally, this had language about grievances should be submitted to the supervisor. We do not have the layers within our organization that that is appropriate. So I changed supervisor to department head, giving the department head 14 working days to respond to the grievance in writing. And then if not resolved, it did have a stop at the Assistant Town Manager and HR Director. I feel that that, again, with the size of our organization, is unnecessary, and so it just brings the second step to the town manager to resolve.
What if the grievance is with the person's department head?
Okay, so. They would still need to stop there, but then it would just, I'm sure if their grievance, so they would still need to bring their grievance to the department head?
If their grievance was against the department head, they have to file it with the department head? I don't like that.
I think there should be an explicit exception in that case.
If it's with your.
So the language before said if they were not comfortable discussing it. So that's really what is just striking because comfortable discussing.
No, if it's directly with.
Okay.
With their department head, you should be able to go right to.
If the grievance is, okay, maybe not, okay, let me think of this. Maybe not, there we would maybe want the second layer of the Assistant Town Manager. So it wasn't coming directly to the town manager. So if the grievance, if the department, unless the department head is the subject of the grievance, in which case the grievance would be addressed to the Assistant Town Manager.
Yes, I like that.
So just from my experience in the school setting, I feel like they're more formal. You'd send your grievance.
Collectively.
And then even if it was the, say, the direct supervisor, they would just send a letter of their response. It wouldn't have to be a face-to-face, one-on-one meeting.
It does not need to be a face-to-face, this does not contemplate.
And then they would just go to the next level because they know that they're probably going to get denied.
I think that having the option to have them be able to go to someone else. I think there are some people that wouldn't file a grievance if it was directly with their manager.
But aren't the managers going to find out anyways when it goes through that next level?
It depends. I mean, if it's an upheld grievance that disciplinary action ultimately is taken against the department head. I think, so in the school setting, are you, are you mostly talking about people who are covered under collective bargaining agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this, this is the SAP, right? So it doesn't give the same protections as a collective bargaining agreement. These folks don't have their union, a union rep accompanying them, so it is a little different. They are essentially advocating for themselves.
I mean, this is any sort of issue that they have? Like, what if it's a sexual harassment complaint? Would that go through grievance procedure? That would be a whole separate process. So like, what would we, what would we be talking about for grievances? This would be, like, what if the, their.
So it's.
Department head was overloading them or not respecting their job.
No, so a grievance would be something that you didn't do this that the SAP said. Right?
You say a violation of the contract, violation.
Right, a violation of the SAP.
So is there something in here that is?
So if their supervisor was not allowing their vacation as it's prescribed or forcing them to come in and not. I still think having the ability, if the grievance is directly with the manager, to be able to, I don't know.
Skip that step and go.
Well, yeah, I'm totally on board with that, too.
My other concern with that is too, it's like, as a manager, you also want the people to come to you with their problems so that you can try to resolve them at the lowest possible level.
Mm-hmm.
That's right, that paragraph A is. The intent is that you don't file a grievance, that you work it out first. that you work it out first, and that's why that's so important, is to just, the intent is to resolve the issue.
Yeah.
And to get to the root of the issue for everybody, not to file a bunch of paperwork back and forth.
Or to always go to the town manager if you have an issue.
Do we have a lot of grievances filed under SAP?
I have been here since February and I've not had one.
I don't recall there, this being like a large problem. Not that it wouldn't or couldn't.
All right, let me, let me try to redraft based on what I've heard in this section. Seventy fourteen, department budgets. Striking this section, it said each department head shall include in the annual budget request a pay adjustment section to provide for funds anticipated pay adjustments during the ensuing year expenditures to be made there from only in accordance with the salary administrative plan with the approval of the personnel committee. These are being presented as part of the budget, which is vetted by a lot of folks. Okay. All right, seventy dash seventeen. Although there's a lot of red, some of it's just a reordering, so moving a paragraph from one spot to another. And then just some clarification in accordance with the FLSA around the definitions of non-exempt and exempt employees. And adding just that, yeah, the, the term regularly scheduled when it comes to non-exempt employees in terms of scheduling, that becomes important later. All right. Vacation time. So while the select board probably knows a lot about the changes that we're intending to make regarding vacation time, due to some conversations that have been had in the context of collective bargaining, the, the general public does not. So this is probably the first airing of what we are considering doing with vacation time, and it is a substantial modernization of our current practice. So our current practice is that employees come to the town and they accrue until July first a prorated amount of time that then for their entire first year of service from July to July, they can accrue whatever they earned in the limited time that they worked here, whether that's one month, one year, et cetera. This is, would be changing so that vacation leave would begin accruing within the first month of the employee's date of hire, and that monthly accruals would flow from there, and we would be on a continual accrual and disassociate with the fiscal year. This would allow employees to continue to accrue vacation time until they reached a cap. The cap would be whatever their accrual rate is plus five days. So if an employee, for example, accrues eighty hours or two weeks of vacation a year and they go an entirety of a year without using any vacation time, they would continue to accrue for the next half a year if they still didn't use any vacation time. So if they went for a year and a half, then they would cap at the fifteen days until they started using some time down. This also allows employees to begin using vacation time immediately and allow them to use that vacation time before it's actually accrued with advanced written notice of the department head and the town manager. To the public that is concerned about hearing that we are going to be granting vacation time before it is accrued, the language states employees will be required to pay back any portion of unearned vacation time that was paid in advance if the employee should leave the town's employment prior to that vacation becoming accrued, and employees may be required to sign an authorization for this deduction. The reality is, is we are going to take anything out of that last pay. So the amount of employees that, as we're in the hiring process, that this comes up is almost one hundred percent. Folks have planned vacations, and frankly, the town of Lunenburg's vacation policy as it is written is draconian. So we talked about the cap. Let's see. Employees will be paid out any vacation time that they have accrued but not yet used. And... What's that? If they leave? Sorry, if they, if they terminate from employ- employment. And I think that that is the brunt of it. Oh, and just the accrual rate incentive, the town manager, with approval of the select board, may grant an initial accrual rate that's higher based on qualifications, experience, market conditions, and the like.
That's another select board approval.
That's another select board approval. I know the board doesn't have probably too many questions about this. There is a question out to town council about how do we manage this changeover? I don't have the answer on that yet for how we manage the changeover as it is applied to SAP employees. It may be a little different. What the goal is here is to give employees the maximum flexibility without negatively impacting the organization and to make Lunenburg as attractive it is as possible while maintaining fiscal reasonableness in the workforce. Okay. Any questions on that?
No questions, but I just want to say I'm a huge proponent of this. It has been since I got on the board, and I think this is a great step, and I appreciate your work on it.
Thank you. Okay. So seventy nineteen, paid holidays. Just adding some clarification language around paid holidays as the language currently is written, it says all persons employed by the town, except those in classification of intermittent or seasonal, shall receive paid holiday on the day the town observes the holiday. Adding the clarification, if they're regularly scheduled to work that holiday. So to make that very clear, folks who have to work a holiday get a floating holiday. The way that it's currently drafted, that holiday needed to be used within thirty days. That seemed prescriptive in a way that was unnecessary. I changed it to fiscal year. That may still be prescriptive in a way that's unnecessary. I'm just thinking literally about, you know, May holidays that are so close to the end of the fiscal year. Open to feedback if there's another way to do it, just trying to not make it as prescriptive around that thirty. Let's see. Adding or clarifying language around eligibility for holiday pay, that full-time or part-time B employees are ineligible for paid holiday if they are in a status of unpaid leave. So if you are in approved leave status, you're eligible, but if you're not, you're not. Okay. Sick leave. Similar to vacation time. Currently, if you are employed by the town of Lunenburg, you must wait six months to get sick. I know that that's a choice. So what this does is change, it, it takes away that six-month waiting period, provides an immediate credit of three days prorated, if necessary, but three days of sick time upfront for all full-time or part-time B employees. Additional sick time does not accrue until the employee completes those three months of service. And then it accrues from there. Let's see. There was references to the July one for the start of the fiscal date, but that would go away. Now that we have a sick leave bank, it clarifies that sick leave donations are only in the context of the sick leave bank and that outside of sick leave bank, there are no donations. Provides part-time A employees the immediate credit of one day for part-time A, and changes when a doctor's note would be required to be in excess of three days. Okay.
Where is that?
Yeah, it is, duh, 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 duh. It is section E, and it was exceeds or is equal to twenty-four hours, so just three days of missed work. Three days is pretty typical for when a doctor's note is required. Okay. Section dash seventy dash twenty dash one was the introduction of the sick leave bank, which would be stricken with the policy that has been adopted, which we do need to form the committee, but we've got the pieces in place. So striking the sick leave bank in its entirety, so it can apply broadly across the organization. Personal leave. Again, removing the six-month waiting period to use personal time, and then clarification of the, the prorated nature, nature of, of the personal days. Here is probably what the employees who are listening to this are going to find the most controversial, but nonetheless, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give my pitch. So, personal leave, there is an incentive. It currently reads, employees who do not use sick leave within a three-month period shall be entitled for one personal day each three-month period. Said personal days are used in the same fiscal year in which they're earned. Personal leave shall be scheduled with the approval of the department head. Personally, speaking personally, I disagree with the incentivization of not using sick time. Sick time is for employees who are sick. If you are abusing your sick time, which is, I believe, why you incentivize it, if you are abusing your sick time, there are other remedies for this. If you are sick, I would like for you to use your sick time and stay home and be well. I don't want employees coming into the workforce ill because they're trying to bank personal days. So that is my personal disagreement with sick leave incentives. I know staff right now is sitting at home, listening to this, very angry with what I just said. So my compromise proposal is that instead of removing the sick leave incentive, all told, which would be my position, that we reduce it from quarterly to every six months. I'm sure I am going to hear a lot on this tomorrow, so I'm not asking for any opinions unless you'd like to provide them at this time.
I, I do want to give one opinion. Sorry?
No, but feel free.
I think that because of the way that we're changing everything else, the way that we're allowing, you know, for the rolling vacation time and not having it ending, I think that that's sort of a give and take here. And I probably didn't just make many friends saying that either, but I can understand, I can understand where you're coming from on this one, and I think with all of the other changes that we are making that are positive and allowing access in the beginning, plus not having that use it or lose it, and like, you know, everyone having to take all of June off, I think that, just, I could see this being a trade-off.
To that point, town hall was a ghost town in June, and June is when we need to get a lot of things done. We are closing out all sorts of things, and having that arbitrary, you can't carry over vacation time, that was a challenge.
No, and I think your point about, don't come to work when you're sick, and if there are people who are abusing sick time, there are other ways to deal with it, I agree.
All right, before any of you make any more enemies, let me move on to the next section.
Well, I, I wouldn't touch it.
All right. Bereavement leave. We have changed bereavement leave in that if your sibling or your step sibling pass, that you get five days as opposed to three. Let's see. All right. Definitions, and then we're done.
Can I, why not sibling-in-law?
Sibling-in-law, so your spouse's sibling? I mean, your, your spouse, your spousing sibling?
If my brother-in-law, I mean...
So the way that, so, three days is what you would get for your brother-in-law, but you, but the language also allows for an additional two days off, which may be granted and charged, and not to be charged against your sick leave. So you can take more time, this is just what you're getting as of right.
Okay.
All right. Definitions. To hourly employee slash non-exempt employee. Intermittent employee, adding that intermittent employees are not eligible for benefits, making that clear. Adding the definition of salaried employee, exempt employee shall mean an employee by the town, employee of the town who by virtue of their classified position is compensated at a biweekly rate of calculated, the definition. The other definition that we added, which the board is familiar with, but perhaps the public not so much, is an expanded definition of spouse. This comes into play especially around sick time. So spouse, the meaning of this term by the marriage laws of the Commonwealth, or someone with whom the individual is cohabitating with the intent of it becoming permanent. We know folks have all sorts of living situations, and they may not be planning to get legally married, but nonetheless live as spouses. So allowing the use of sick time for those folks in particular is where that comes into play. Let's see. Striking from the employment contract section, relocation expenses. That is it for now. This is very much still, obviously, a work in progress. But, yeah, I just, any, I think it would be helpful to know, and maybe not tonight, maybe you need some time to think about this, whether folks think that this should be brought as an omnibus package, or whether there's a way that this should be broken up into more than one article.
Have you thought of a way to break it up? Like, is there a way that makes sense to you to break it up?
I would pull out, like, the employee benefit-related stuff, so the vacations, sick ti- all those things, put them in one article, put the personnel committee stuff in another article.
That might be.
But you end up, you, you end up risking throwing the baby out with the bathwater if you do that, a little bit. You, although you must throw the baby out with the bathwater if you put it in one omnibus. So, you know, maybe if folks in the public want to give some feedback, how their reactions are hearing this, you know, reaching, reaching out to those of you that they know to have those conversations, and we can kind of see where people are.
I would like to present it however we can get it approved, so I just don't know what the best way to do that is.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I want to thank you and Julie as well. I know months, months of work has gone into this.
And, and I will say, through you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, because I have been driving Julie with, in the context of all of the employment changes that have been going on, I have been pushing that we still get this done, and she really dug in and helped bring this over the finish line. You know, in that, it, it was very much to get this to you right up into the wire, and we had had discussions about, do we table this? But this has been a goal of the select board for some time, to bring some of these changes, and it was important that we bring something to this fall town meeting. Also, to that kind of drive up into the end, to employees, the, there was an email that went out today. We would have very much liked to have this workshop and talk about this with the SAP employees in advance of them kind of hearing it tonight and seeing this tonight. With, with all of what's been going on in the office, we just ran out of time. So if you're hearing this, you haven't read your email, you have an email, you want to provide some feedback, please do. That nothing's, we're not done.
All right. Well, thank you very much, and we'll pick this back up next week. And that was the last article.
I just, a quick question, with the sick leave incentive, do the, the rest of the personnel still have that? Like, the union contracts, do they have incentives?
Let me re, let me provide that information to you of who has and who doesn't, and what they are. Good question.
Some do and some don't.
All right. Any other discussion on the SAP article tonight? Okay. And that was the last one.
So I have a, a question kind of related to the warrant. Going back to free cash. If that is not certified by town meeting, because I know you're concerned about whether we can get it certified. get it certified. I've, I've not been here when it's not been certified in time for this fall town meeting. What happens?
If fall, if, if free cash is not certified by fall town meeting, it just means that we can't spend it. So, again, free cash is used for typically things that are one-time in nature. We don't, some communities do their capital in the fall, they disjoint their capital from their annuals, so that would be very important for those communities. It, it would mean that those one-off types of items that currently, as I'm looking at, I'm looking to grab that old capital. If, if for whatever reason that old capital was not available, it would mean that those projects couldn't be funded. But there is, so, it, um, I, I believe free cash will be certified by November 18th. It may not be certified by the time this goes to print.
Oh, yeah, but that's.
But, but we do have, again, those funds available and those old capital articles to pay for things like the stormwater consultant if, if approved by town meeting.
All right. Anything else relating to the warrant tonight? All right, moving on. Discussion on tri-board meeting of the select board, finance committee, and school committee. We don't have one next week, and the schedule is getting pushed back, and that's kind of all there is to report on that tonight. Minutes, warrants, and action items. So we have the minutes of the tri-board meeting of August 20th, 2025. Any feedback on that? Have you all had a chance to read them yet?
Yep.
Okay, is there a motion to approve them?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the tri-board meeting of August 20th, 2025.
Second?
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Warrants, do we have any tonight? I don't see any.
No, you do, um, you do have a second set of minutes from September 23rd.
We do.
That were emailed out.
Yes.
But perhaps folks haven't had a chance to read them?
I don't see them in the drive, so.
No, they're not there in the, your email.
Yeah.
I, I'm seeing heads shaking now, so it looks like we'll put those on for the next agenda.
But I did, yeah, I saw that one go out too, though, so, okay, thank you for reminding us about that one. Okay, any action items? Committee reports.
Most of them are basically working on the master plan steering committee feedback. You mentioned the library. MMPO is meeting a week from tomorrow. Planning board, as mentioned, has a public hearings, two hearings on Monday, October 27th, the MBTA Communities Act, and a request to eliminate the common driveways be paved. Master Plan Steering Committee will be going over the reviews, feedback that they've received from various boards, commissions, and committees. And the agricultural commission finished up their year with the fair on Saturday, September 27th. While I was there, the, the attendance was pretty good, but it was light. They were always hoping for more of a turnout, and that's about it.
The board of assessors met October 1st. Again, as the town manager said, they are still looking for one member. They had four abatement requests received in September. There were 43 motor vehicle excise tax abatements processed. They were waiting payment from the tax collector. The fiscal 2026 real estate exemption applications were mailed out September 1st. The deadline for application submission was, is April 1st, 2026, with a suggestion for residents to submit applications by mid-November for quicker processing. The 41D exemption update amount was $1,029, reflecting a 2.9% cost of living increase. Social Security deductions can be utilized, which may help applicants meet income limits. The chapter land applications are being accepted until December 1st, 2025, with strict requirements for documentation. The functional and economic obsolescence discounts totaled $8,231 were reviewed and removed from properties lacking justification. Fiscal year 2026 growth report, the growth for residential, commercial, industrial, and chapter land is projected at $392,380. The fiscal year 2026 40S smart growth cost report was submitted to DLS. The rollback tax report for 222 West Townsend Road was submitted. They had mentioned that the select board had formally refused first rate of refusal. The future classification hearing was scheduled for mid-November. And their next meeting is October 15th. The school committee met on October 1st. There was new equipment purchase for food services operations. They had needed two additional paraprofessionals at the primary in Turkey Hill. They were gonna get that through the salary reserve. Also, an IT position as well. They had a fall athletics report, the strong participation in sports. There was also an FY26 quarterly budget report, and a facilities and grounds report. There was a new custodian hired. And the facilities are prepared for the winter. They talked about two warrant articles, the special stabilization fund that we had talked about tonight, and they did not vote on another proposal for an article, but they had discussed about the additional chapter 70 funding, but they decided to not put it forward. And their next meeting is October 15th. The Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee had their tours this week of the Brooks House. And then they also met on September 29th, talking about building options, different areas around Lunenburg. And we also had the superintendent come as a guest to talk about kind of flexibility with ACE program and her staff, so meeting went well. And scheduled to meet on October 20th.
All right. I think stormwater, I think we had a meeting since the last select board meeting. Main focus, as town manager mentioned, was talking with a consultant to help us update the impervious area data, which is 10 years old, we learned recently. So that's in the works, and we'll be meeting, whatever the third Thursday is in October. And finance committee meets Thursday this week.
I don't have any.
I just wanna say, welcome back. It's so nice to have you back, Amanda.
Thank you.
So I'm glad everything's going well, and that you're back tonight. So, we had our second meeting of the bylaw review committee, and we started looking at part one of the bylaws, which is not too substantive, it's mostly administrative stuff. We are sending out an email, actually, I think it was already sent out, I saw it. So we sent out an email to relevant boards, committees, to start soliciting feedback from boards and committees that have an associated bylaw on updates that they think should be made, so we're gonna incorporate that into our discussions as well. And our next meeting, I believe, is in two weeks, I don't remember, sometime in mid-October. And we're going to start looking at part two, which is a little more of substance in the bylaws, so that's when we're really gonna start getting into it. But so far, it's a great group of people, it's, the conversations have been very productive, and I've been really enjoying these meetings. Okay, upcoming meetings. So we're gonna meet next week and the week after that, the 14th and the 21st, and those are gonna be here, and regularly scheduled select board meetings. Public comment. Is there any public comment from the public? And just a reminder, the public comment is limited to 15 minutes, with no more than three minutes per speaker, except at the discretion of the chair. It's an opportunity for you to make a public comment. It's not a Q and A session. So Ms. Lockwood, go right ahead.
Is it, did you just start this, this new talk about the public comment today?
Yeah, just for you.
Oh, that's great, yeah. Well, you know, I, I first wanna talk about processes, and public comment is actually a question that I have. Did I miss the opening public comment?
Yeah, you did.
Um, there's, I noticed that generally speaking, has been moving at times, and, and it's, you know, sometimes if you have a public comment, the idea is you get the public, the majority of the people, they're not here to participate. And the fact that it's shifting, it makes it harder to participate.
Yet here you are, but go ahead.
I aren't too funny today. So, as I said, first, I'm gonna talk about process. The, today was the first time that we went through all the proposed town meeting articles, and, and at the same time, you approve the addition, and sometimes you approve the, you know, the recommendation. There are a lot of, a lot of very meaningful and substance articles there, and, you know, I, I love that these meetings have been shorter. I think the last one was last an hour. But, you know, giving time for the public to digest this is, and participate in the evolution of the bylaw, of, you know, the conversations. And preventing, you know, 10-hour-long town meetings is a good way to, you know, the earlier you can talk about some of those articles. The other question, enough to be answered today, Mr. Chair, about, the historical commission is a chartered commission, and that is based on the APDC proposal, you said there will be somewhat of a minimal change, but a change, right? And, and from what I understood, anything that's chartered can only be changed in any sub, in any level, again, Lunenburg is my first town, during the, you know, charter review process, and.
I'll, I'll just say, nothing in this proposed article changes anything in the charter. It's just the bylaw.
You said, didn't you say you're gonna be changing something to the historical commission charter?
No.
No.
To add architectural overseeing?
No.
Okay. All right, just, that's good. But, but how are you gonna add that they're, they're supervising this other bylaw, if you're not changing anything to their current charge?
That part's in the bylaw.
It's the change to the bylaw.
Okay, but isn't the historical commission a chartered commission? They live inside and outside the charter?
So, there are, getting into the discussion here.
Oh, you don't need to get into the discussion. My, my, so, what you're saying is?
The changes to chapter 113, which is, chapter 113 is in the bylaws. So it's changing chapter 113 of the bylaws.
Okay. What I understood, it was, anything that's chartered, you don't change. The APDC proposal change is, is a zoning change, and I find it surprising that this has not made into the planning board, has not been discussed by the planning board. The enforcement or zoning laws lie with the planning board, and somehow this is not coming from the planning board. Planning board has not discussed this in public meeting. And regarding processes, changes in zoning usually requires hearings, notifications. And in the past couple of years, I noticed, after town meeting, we see that one pager on the ledger that the AG, if Lunenburg didn't follow all the requirements on zoning, the AG must put a note out saying, if you disagree with this because you're not giving proper notice, please contact me. Again, this lives inside of zoning. Now, moving on to the, just commenting on the APDC proposal, which I have sent several emails, more than two, about the subject to most of the members, all the members here, and I got two quick responses, you know. It took over two years of the bylaw to be proposed, discussed, gotten feedback from the community and everything. And there were very good reasons why they chose to create a whole new commission to enforce this bylaw. That bylaw is a big compromise. Like, I mean, you know, I don't wanna be limited to my, use my, my time here to explain how the, the bylaw works and everything, but there were very good reasons why it was created a new commission. So, some people spent two years discussing this, and now on the first reading of the, the information, we are already adding, and I don't think, did you guys approve for recommendation? No, okay, that's great. It, it just feels like we're skipping too many steps. This is a changing in zoning. And, and I, of all the things that I have said, the emails that I sent you, I never said that I had concerns about expanding the powers of the, of, of the bylaw, but it's the interpretation, on how that interpretation has, how the interpretation of the bylaw has been used over the years, is very concerning for residents that live here, and that's my concern. In the most recent master, master plan committee meeting, the chair of the APDC said, "We are allowing a resident to change the windows because they were changed before, and therefore there is no historical value." Historical value is not part of the bylaw. So, the problem for residents is that if we want, if we get denied by the APDC, we have to go to land court to get that approved. It's, so the bar is not just even going to the zoning board of appeals, is, you go to court. There are only some single residents in this district. Making anyone who needs to replace windows to go to the court is ridiculous. And, and they can do that. Now, I live in a historical home, I have some windows that are older, I have had those windows redug, rebuilt. It costs five times more to do that in a window in a barn than it costs new windows. So that's the, the, what you're saying to me is that if I, not, let's say it's not me, but someone who needs to replace their window, and they decide it's historical and has historical value. Imagine the hurt of that, that single resident will have to go through because of that. So it's not about expanding the definition of the bylaw, but it's how historically it has been applied. And I sent, on the email that I sent you guys, I, I listed several cases where it was not applied the way the bylaw was intended to, and I also sent you all the, you know, Rebecca Landry's communication about that bylaw, what it was supposed to do, what it was not going to do. And you will see through the information I sent you that it, many times, it were not applied that way. So.
All right, Ms. Lockwood.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too, sir.
All right. Are there any public comments from the public on Zoom? We can't hear you. If you have to unmute, you might need to unmute again. I don't remember how you do that on a phone.
Star six?
Star six.
I'm unmuted. Can you hear me now?
There you are, we can hear you.
All right, I'll be quick. I, I wanna correct.
Sorry, just make sure you start, Mr. Rogers. We know who you are, but you gotta start with your name and your address.
Okay, my name is David W. Rogers. I live at 82 Highland Street in Lunenburg, Mass.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yep. The playground, the, the historic timeline on that is that years ago, the Pearson family in town lost a child, and they petitioned the school and the powers-to-be to construct a playground for the kids, and they called it Kids' Kingdom, that's how it started. And then when we lost Connor Lawrence, everybody knows that we expanded the, the playground. And I'm, I'm confident that we can put a, a situation together that satisfies everybody. Okay? So there. The, the other question I have here is, the director of municipal finance and the town accountant, who does the town accountant report to?
So, who, are you asking questions?
Yeah, I just wanna know, from a, from an organizational point, who, who does the, sorry?
No one said anything.
Oh, who does the town accountant report to?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you wanna entertain, I'm happy to answer the question if you'd like me to entertain questions.
I, no. Mr. Rogers, I'm sorry. If you wanna continue with your public comment, you may.
All right, I, well, this is an integral part of my question, okay? And I'll, um, fine, I'll, I'll ask the question a different way. Does the town accountant report to the director of municipal finance?
It's the same person.
The same person?
It's, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to, so.
Yeah, I, Mr. Rogers, is there a public comment you wanna make regarding that, that position?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, the director of, if in fact, the town accountant reports to the director of municipal finance, how in this world can, can this work under the, the, that setup? I mean, because they're all one and the same, that's the question I have.
Well, they're in the, they're, it's the same, same person.
That's right. How can you, how can you act as the, the town accountant, and then change your hat, and then act as the director of the municipal finance? You can't. I mean, it, it, it doesn't make any sense at all.
Hold on a minute.
Hello?
All right, thank you, Mr. Rogers, for your public comment.
Wait a minute, no. How do we get an, it's, it's a real simple question, and, and anybody with any business sense, which is where I came from, you know, this would not work, and I don't see how it's going to work in the town of, of Lunenburg as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Both jobs can't be held by one person. You just can't do it.
Are there any public comments from the town manager this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a public comment relative to the position of the Director of Municipal Finance and Town Accountant. So to be clear, Mr. Chairman, the Director of Municipal Finance is appointed by the Town Manager, the Town Accountant title is appointed by the Select Board, which is why they live in a duality. The Director of Municipal Finance is outlined in Section 5-3 of the Town Charter. There shall be a Director of Finance and Financial Services headed by a Director of Municipal Finance, who is the Town Manager or the Town Manager's appointee per Article 4, who shall be responsible for the management of the fiscal and financial affairs of the town, for the supervision and coordination of all activities of all agencies in relation to fiscal or financial management. I'm just going to pull up the, Mr. Chairman, I'm in the middle of my public comment. If I can just pull up the Town Accountant position. As I'm pulling this up, which is why I typically don't answer questions during meetings, there is also in that section, where is it? Director of Accounting, Division of Accounting, the Division of Accounting headed by the Town Accountant and appointed by the Select Board shall be responsible for the following, and then goes through with it. As I understand, our current Director of Municipal Finance is also our Town Accountant under an employment agreement, and as I understand, that has been the case for many years prior. I believe Karen Broshu also was both the Finance Director and the Town Accountant, and I know Karen was here for a substantial amount of time, so I can't speak to what happened before her, but I guess I would suggest to the commenter before, that this is the way that this has been done in the town of Lunenburg for at least a decade.
All right, any public comment from the board?
I do. I just wanted to thank the board, as well as the members of the public, for allowing me to take the time off I needed to deal with some health issues, and I am hoping to be back here and give whatever time I can. I appreciate everyone's support and happy to be back.
Of course. Any other public comments from the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. It is 9:18 PM, and the Select Board is adjourned. Everyone have a good night, and we will see you next week.